About Rexy. Yeah, well.
This is Duffy. Was we expecting Rex?
Well, it's the appointed hour. You have a quorum, so. Okay. All right. Well, welcome back, ladies and gentlemen. I call out of recess. Lee County Zoning Board of Appeals hearing on petition number twenty-one P fifteen sixty-six. South Dixon Solar LLC's request for a special use permit to construct a solar energy system in South Dixon Township here in Lee County. If you are merely listening to us on YouTube and have forgotten the Zoom meeting ID, it is nine one five three nine two three nine one five four. The password is as it has been two zero nine eight four zero. If you want to join us and just view and listen to us on YouTube, on your computer or cellphone, use your browser, go to www.youtube.com. In the search bar, type Lee County IL, short for Illinois, Board of Appeals. Don't worry about upper or lowercase letters. That should bring you to session dates and assuming you want to view tonight's proceeding, click on October fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and we should frighteningly appear on your screen. Under the governor's current executive order, all persons two years of age or older, except those who have a disability as defined by the American with Disabilities Act, are required to wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth when in an indoor public space such as this. And to wear a face mask covering their nose and mouth when, excuse me, in an indoor space such as this, regardless of whether they are maintaining a social distance of more than six feet apart or not. At this point, if you're in this courtroom or either on in other spaces in this building, I ask you to please turn your cellphones off or at least to silent. And as to roll, I note the presence of Chair of the ZBA, Mr. Forster, its Vice Chair, Mr. Burrow. Mr. Bothy's present. Mr. Hughes is present. The Honorable D Duffy, zoning officer is present. The Renewable Energy Coordinator, Alice Henkel, is present. Representing the petitioner, our attorneys Barry and Kennedy. There are, oh, we have an IT specialist with us, Jonathan, court reporter himself, and by my count, I'm gonna do it again. Fifteen interested parties, whether they are representatives of the petitioner or not, and there are no people in the rear jury room, is that right, Mr. Duffy? Okay. That having been said, we will pick up where we left off, which was the petitioner was presenting evidence. And you may, Mr. Barry?
Thank you, Judge Slavin. I'd like to present as a witness first tonight, Mr. Marousse.
Okay. So I'm going to swear that the testimony or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, oh, truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Great, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Marousse.
Good evening, counsel.
Could you please state your name for the record?
Michael S. Marousse, M-A-R-O-U-S.
And I believe you have a PowerPoint presentation this evening, correct?
I do.
We can get that up on the screen? There she is. All right, well, could you tell us a little bit about your background, Mr. Marousse?
Sure. I am a real estate appraiser and consultant and have been doing this for over forty years. I have been awarded the MAI designation, which is the highest form of real estate appraisal valuation, and also invited to membership to the Councils of Real Estate. I have the general certified licensure, which is the highest form of real estate valuation in Illinois and hold it in about six other states. I have appraised probably over fifteen thousand properties with over twenty billion dollars of value in my career. Clientele includes a mix of public bodies, individuals, major corporations, developers, financial institutions, et cetera. My office is located at fifteen fifty Northwest Highway in Park Ridge, Illinois. The majority of work that Marousse and Company does is in the state of Illinois. Next slide. So in my career, I've been qualified over a hundred times in circuit and federal courts throughout the Midwest. I've testified well over a hundred zoning-type cases such as this, and I've prepared several hundred value-impact studies as I did for the proposed South Dixon Solar. And they include development of industrial facilities, waste transfer facilities, quarries, religious facilities, mixed-use facilities, and as you can see on this slide, solar projects throughout the Midwest. So next. I think we're ahead of ourselves a little bit, Jonathan.
Yeah, go back to slide three, please. Thanks.
So I've done studies for numerous solar-proposed facilities, generally over a hundred megawatts in the state of Illinois, Indiana, Wisconsin, Iowa, Maryland. And if we go to the next page, it's not the next page, and I've also looked at probably twenty-five wind projects in about ten different states, generally over a hundred megawatts of capacity there. So in this, I'm just gonna give you my conclusion and then kind of explain what I did.
Well, before you do that, Mr. Marousse, can I ask you if you performed a property values market impact study in connection with the South Dixon Solar project?
I have.
And is that study Appendix W to the permit application materials?
It is.
And I think you were about to get there, but could you tell us the conclusions you drew from your study, please?
Sure. As a result of my experience and market impact analysis done for specifically the proposed South Dixon Solar, it's my opinion that there is no market data indicating the solar farm will have a negative impact on either rural residential or agricultural property values in the surrounding area. Finally, for agricultural properties that host the panels, the additional income from the solar lease may and probably will significantly increase the value and marketability of those properties.
And could you go to slide four, please? I think that shows your conclusion, correct?
Right. So my report is plus or minus a hundred pages long, so what I'm gonna do here with this PowerPoint is just kind of summarize. But first of all, if we look at the points, and I'm not gonna read them verbatim, but there's significant financial benefits to the local economy and the taxing districts.
Next slide, please, sorry. There we go.
And an analysis of residential properties proximate to existing solar farms did not support any finding that proximity to panels had a negative impact on property values. Also, analysis of agricultural land values in Illinois and other states did not find any negative impact by the development of these panels. The, and this is found by looking at leases throughout the Midwest. A very important aspect of this report is I contacted all the assessors with major solar in the state of Illinois and also Indiana, Wisconsin, Iowa, part of North Carolina, and Maryland to basically determine, number one, did they have tax appeals filed and had there been granted relief based on proximity to solar panels? And were they valuing property different? I'll go into this a little more detail later, but based on this research and analysis, there have been no successful tax appeals based on negative impact of solar. And then the last, that the proposed use will not be detrimental to public health, the safety and comfort, or general welfare of the residents, nor will the project substantially diminish or impair the value of other properties or improvements in the vicinity of the solar farm.
Next slide, please.
So basically, when, as an appraiser, analysis, what we're doing is looking at what impacts real estate, including positive economic benefits and also negative. And up here on a slide, and it's some of you are, you know, a decent distance away, but you can see where you have, you know, a grain mill type use, you can have grain storage type use. You can have various agricultural type uses. And you were kind of looking for appearance, environmental and sustainability, noise and odor, you know, the hog farms is probably the easiest description on the odor issue. Traffic, truck, heavy truck traffic, heavy additional increase in traffic is something to consider. Hazardous materials, I guess we could talk about a nuclear power plant as an example, and also waste transfer station. And what, what's the impact on the public services? Is it a heavy use on the roads and the infrastructure and the bridges? Or does it improve them? And then what does it do for the schools? Does it allow additional economic benefits to the schools to upgrade the physical plant? And obviously, the quality of the teachers and the materials that the kids have to use. And then public safety, where you get into a situation, I guess we could say a prison or a very active nightclub where there might be some concern for public safety. So these are all issues that I look at every time I look at what kind of proposed project.
And so those are the factors you considered, but can you next tell us about the scope of work that your study performed?
Sure. What, what I did is I reviewed the Lee County public documents, including the zoning ordinance. I reviewed the project supportive documents. So there's various engineer hearing plans. There's environmental plans, and, you know, there's soil type plans. And an economic analysis of this, and I reviewed that. I toured the site, the footprint, on two different occasions to kind of get a feel for the area, to look at properties that had sold, to look at the trend of development as to what is going on in the area. And then I looked at the demographics, which is really income levels, population levels, population density in the area of the proposed solar farm. And then comparables were researched, both sales of farms, but also I call farm that small rural residential properties to look at that trend of development and look at those sales, price per square foot amenities and overall prices, and also absorption times. And so data on this information was utilized throughout the report. Interviews of local real estate professionals that have experience in solar. So to go into an area where there's a proposed development, it really isn't fair to interview a local broker because if that's so stated, who I talked to, and it's public knowledge, it could hurt their business for people that may have a negative aspect. And if they haven't had any experience with solar, they're not necessarily providing any legitimate response. So what is done is we talk to brokers that have experience with these type uses where there's existing solar farms. And then the properties that were used for match pairs that I'm gonna go into later, information was provided and those were inspected. So there's several key points in our analysis, obviously, looking at the economics, which you've heard, the tax revenue somewhere between a million to a million three per year, which is a significant increase with no really strain on services. And we look at that certainty of the lease income to the property owners and also the taxing bodies. We look at match pairs, which goes to looking at sales of similar properties that are close to a solar farm and look at similar properties in the area having similar characteristics to see if those sales proximate to panels are negatively impacted.
And when you perform your matched pair analysis, do you look at actual sales data then?
Yes. And as an appraiser, when anytime you use a sale, you want to make sure it's arm's length. So if there's a sale, inter-family sale, a liquidation sale, something that may not be arm's length, that's not a sale that fits the definition of market value and is considered, we're trying to find arm's length sales in order to make our comparable test. And this has, has been brought out because there has not been major solar that has had history in Illinois. I went to other areas, Wisconsin, Minnesota, which we'll talk about a little later, Indiana, and also Arizona, where there's some of these larger hundred to three hundred megawatt facilities to look at the impact they had. And looking at areas where the property values have some comparability to the South Dixon footprint.
And I know your report, which I think you said is over a hundred pages long, contains several different examples of matched pair analyses, but you've got a few to take us through here tonight in your PowerPoint, correct?
My wife would say I might think it's exciting, but she doesn't, so I didn't, we're not gonna go through all of them tonight. We'll go through the highlights and I'll be able to answer any additional questions. I think there's probably thirty data points of sales, including match pair and sale resales throughout the report to form part of the basis of my conclusion.
Next slide, please.
So unfortunately, just because of the size and the volume of the room, it's tough to read, but this is a sale in LaSalle County, Illinois, and it's basically, there's three pages that I have here. The first page is the summary, which we'll stay on. The second page will show a picture. The third page will show a map. And the picture on the top of this, oh, please stay here, you can see the solar panels and you can see the house up here. So the house proximate is in Streeter, it's four hundred and eighty-five feet away. It sold for a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. And it was built in nineteen ninety-seven on two acres. The comparable that's not proximate sold for a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, also in Streeter, built in nineteen ninety-four, seventeen hundred and seventy feet on three quarters of an acre. So what we show here, they're both one-story frame houses, both three bedrooms. The one proximate to the panels has a full unfinished basement, the one not has a crawl space. They both had central air, they both had forced air heat, both had well and septic. The one proximate to the solar had a three-car garage, the one not had a two-car garage. So basically, go through the factors and ascertain, comping them out to see when we make adjustments for size, lot size, age of the property, amenities of the property. And based on this example in Streeter, there was no indication that there was a negative impact on value. So we can go to the next page briefly, and this just shows kind of aerials, pictures. Again, they're more illustrated in my report. And then the next page is just showing the location of these properties. So throughout my report, I go through each comp or comparable match pairs in a similar situation, providing the key data points. And then at the end, I provide, basically, as an appraiser, we call it an adjustment grid, just as we would do if we were appraising somebody in this room's house. So the next one, so we're gonna jump to probably the largest solar facility that has had some experience in the Midwest, and this is called North Star Solar in north, North Branch, Minnesota. So this is a hundred megawatt solar facility that was developed on about a thousand acres. Jonathan, I'm gonna ask you to go to the two more slides and then I'll back up. So this is fascinating. The comp is right here. And I call this a donut hole because solar surrounds this property on four sides. So I went up there, I looked at it, I talked to the assessor, there's actually data because it was developed in two thousand seventeen. Prices have gone up consistently, and the assessor finds no negative impact, he's not valuing the properties any differently. But what happened, because they were surrounding this whole little subdivision of like six or seven houses, the developer bought the houses, and then they put their construction workers in there to house them. And then when the solar farm was up and operating, they put them back on the market, and one of the original purchasers came back and repurchased the house. So I have examples in my report of resales of these properties. So if you go back, I mean, one more, so this is picture. So the, this is the sale here, which you saw on a bigger scale, is right surrounded by the panels. It originally sold in two thousand one, long before the solar development, for two hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. And it was built at that point, it's twenty-one hundred and fifty feet on ten acres, two-story frame, vinyl, four-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath, central air, three-car garage. So then it sells, so this is the first sale, then it sells in the fall of two thousand seventeen, house is pretty much the same. It sells for three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So two twenty-six eight from two thousand one, when it originally sold, the market was good until two thousand six. And then about two thousand eight, we went through the real estate recession. This area, by the way, is about twenty-five miles north of St. Paul. It's kind of a northern suburb of St. Paul, Minnesota, Twin Cities. So in two thousand eight to two thousand twelve, there's a dramatic drop in the general real estate market for properties in the subject area and in this area. But then it starts coming back in two thousand twelve. In two thousand seventeen, this property sells again for three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. So it goes from two twenty-six to three hundred and thirty-three thousand. This is after the solar farm has been under construction and open. Then recently, the end of last year, right around Christmas, it sold for four hundred and fifteen thousand dollars, almost another thirty percent increase. And again, this is during the period of three to four years when the solar farm has been existing, has been, surrounds a property on four sides, there's views on four sides. Jonathan, if you could go two slides up again, okay, you know what, go to the middle of the picture, just so everybody sees the picture. So it's an attractive house. It's not overwhelming, but it's, you know, it's an attractive house. And it's on a large lot. The farmland, agland values up there are not as high as they are in Lee County, but there's, you know, it's still good farmland. Okay, so the next slide, again, while we're showing the surrounding, because there's a big question, what happens if I have solar panels on two sides, if I have it on three sides, or if I have it on four? This is on four, but visually, if you're standing in the backyard of this house and you're looking, this would be to the east, you're only gonna see solar panels probably the first couple hundred feet. This panel's back here, you're not gonna see, you're not gonna notice same issue if you look to the south. You're only gonna see the front several layers and also to the north. So if this was double, triple, quadruple, the visual from this house would really be the same. So that's, that's why this picture, I think, is a great example. So the next example, and this is a, I think, this is in Arizona, it's about twenty-five miles west of Phoenix, basically the desert area, but it's a suburb, a far suburb of Phoenix. And here we have a panel array, and here we have a house, and this is a manufactured house. Maybe we'll go one more picture just to show this. So this is the one proximate to the panels. This is a similar house that's not proximate to a solar farm. So Jonathan, if you could go back again. If you look here, the one proximate to a house is, it's kind of dark in here, I think it's about nine hundred feet away. But there's nothing, they don't have trees, they don't have any terrain, they don't have bush. It's desert all year long and basically full visibility. And this house, by the solar panels, sold for three hundred thousand dollars. And it, nineteen ninety-six, just under two thousand feet on twenty acres. Now, the land out there is a lot less valuable than it is here per acre, but it's twenty-acre site. So the land itself probably at five thousand acres, a hundred thousand. The comparable that I used as the match pair is, I guess we go to the next page just to show the picture. A similar one-story house, similar vintage, sold for actually less, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars in a similar market period, a little bit newer, slightly smaller on five-and-a-half acres or five-and-a-quarter acres. Again, when making adjustments for the locational issues, the conditional issues, the size issues, there's no indication of negative impact. And I think people might say, this isn't the Midwest, but it's similar demographics, similar price points, and it's similarly affected by the views of solar arrays. And it's also across, and that's a hundred and fifty-five megawatt facility, which is somewhere in the fifteen-hundred to two thousand acre range. So then I'm gonna start moving a little quicker, Jonathan, so if you go up a couple more slides. So this, and I, now, go back. So basically, what we did was research sales in the proposed footprint or touching in and around the footprint. And I provided information on six sales here, anywhere from a hundred and ten thousand to two hundred and six thousand that basically sold eighteen through the end of twenty, generally on one-and-a-half to three-acre sites. As typical of your community, the ages range, built from nineteen oh one to those built up in the two thousands. These sizes were generally, they averaged about sixteen, seventeen hundred feet, some were smaller, some were bigger. And the price points were generally in the, you know, eighty to ninety-five dollar per square foot range. So these were the most recent sales in and around the footprint that I found. I'm sure there's others, but these are indicative of the markets. And so if we kind of quickly go through, Jonathan, with the next slide, and again, the report just shows the pictures. And you said, why don't you take a face-on picture here? Well, some of these houses out in the ag country have view shields, we call them, which basically are trees and bushes are planted around them, some are set back. So I can't go drive up somebody's driveway, knock on their door and take a picture of their house, but I'm taking the picture from the street. When I don't have a good picture, we'll use aerial photography. So again, the next page, next two pages show kind of diversity of the housing stock in the South Dixon market. Jonathan, maybe one more. And then the last page of this group. This just shows the footprint, and it kind of shows, these are right in the footprint, these are just outside of it. This one's a little farther southeast. So again, more detail in my report. The next, which I'm really not gonna spend much time on, is just a summary of ag sales or, you know, sales in the community. And again, great, great farmland, depending on the hydrology and the quality of the soil, are you on gravel? Do you have buildings? You know, the price points vary, but in my report, I talk about You know, the price points vary, but in my report, I talk about uh ag land value. The next page, Jonathan, uh, just shows the pictures. So the next page goes into this Illinois Assessor Survey Analysis. And I started doing this about five years ago for wind because I was trying to find out that those people in the trenches, uh, how they were valuing land uh proximate or uh in view of turbines. So I brought this forth with solar because it's the same issue that, number one, talk of, you know, and so we, through public records and other sources, we can find out who has major solar. So we call the assessors in the counties to see and talk about their existing solar farm, their experience with it. In Illinois, we don't have a lot of big solar farms, so that's why it's important to also go into some of these other states. And to say, are you looking at values proximate to solar farms to see if there's been any change, difference upward downward in value? And the consistent answer is, we don't see any differential. Uh, we've had uh board members on the county board ask us to look into it. We've had citizens ask us to look into it. So we're watching the sales, we don't find any indication of difference in values and we're not assessing these properties any differently. And then the question is, have you had any appeals? And the answer is no, there's been people that have talked about it. If they, if they make a formal appeal, then the assessor does a study and then it'll go to a local board, Board of Review, PTAB Property Tech, Tax Appeal Board. None of that has happened, none of that has been granted. So as I've been doing this over the last few years, uh, that same study, and I just finished one in Iowa, which has, you know, a reasonable amount of solar. Uh, Wisconsin, that's getting a lot of solar, Indiana, it's getting a lot of solar, uh, same answers. So I ventured into North Carolina, which is probably ahead of the curve as far as time. And, and I think contacted thirteen assessors with the biggest, the counties that had the most solar. Same issues, you know, they get, seem to have a consistency where there's concern during the entitlement process, during the construction process. And then once it's up and running, it becomes just part of the fabric of the ag community and they're not getting any appeals.
And Mr. Marus, would you have expected to see reduced assessments if there was a, a decrease in property values for homes that were proximate to solar projects from the assessors?
It's kind of a layup question because I've done probably over a thousand tax appeal appraisals for both public and private bodies. But clearly, if people feel that there's a reason that their values have been negatively impacted and it can be used to reduce their real estate tax burden, they are going to make an appeal on a residential appeal. That can be done with a little research and it can be done by an individual, getting comparable data and then going in and meeting with the assessor and providing the factors. Obviously, in a major industrial complaint than that, you may have to get an attorney and get an appraiser. But yes, if people think their taxes are too high uniformly, uh, whether it's Lee County or any other county in the state, which I've probably done tax appeals in thirty counties, uh, people are very sensitive to this. So it's a good, you know, a good barometer of the reality of value impacts.
And again, the assessors you spoke to didn't see any property tax appeals for uh residences that were next to or near solar projects?
No, and, and, you know, to be fair, they had people that, you know, were not positive about solar and had personal opinions, just like people don't like different colors of cars, colors of houses, you know, having a silo or barn built next to them. But when they looked at it, they found no indication it had a negative impact on value. And in fact, what it did to the local economy for the economics, it was benefit.
Right, I think you also looked at some uh literature for purposes of your study as well, correct?
Yes, next page, please. So what, what's also interesting here is as an appraiser, you have to be aware of what's going on in the market and look at future trends and look at published data. Uh, and having done this for wind for quite a while, there's quite a few, we call peer-reviewed studies, which means you have to do a study that's analyzed, that's vetted by other professionals before it gets published. It's called peer-reviewed, something that's a blog on the internet is not peer-reviewed, that's just personal opinion. So there's been quite a few wind studies, but there's only been really two solar studies. And the first one um is a couple of years old now. And the first one that came out is University of Texas up here. And what they basically did is they went out and sent information and followed up uh with uh assessors and people in counties throughout the U.S. To see uh if in their opinion, there was a negative impact based on solar. And then number two, did they have experience uh with it? And did they uh have any quantifiable conclusions? What happened is a lot of the assessors that did not have experience in solar in their county had a negative uh opinion. But then when they got to assessors that had experience with solar, they found that they had no quantifiable uh uh analysis or empirical support that justified a decrease in value. And this study concluded uh with an opinion that there was nothing substantiating a negative impact on value. They had concerns with setbacks. And, you know, I think that's an important factor where initially the solar projects could have fifty-foot setbacks from houses. And the new norm, in my experience throughout the Midwest, is two hundred feet. And with uh aesthetic landscaping, if necessary. And the proposed project of four hundred feet is actually uh almost double what's the, the new norm. So the concern was with setbacks, uh, they did not, uh, they were doing studies generally of existing solar and many of them were not uh, you know, the size of a hundred-plus megawatt facilities. But the overall conclusion, no negative impact. Then the next study that comes out next year, uh, we need to go back one, is uh the Rhode Island uh uh study. And it's Rhode Island and Massachusetts. So this was done by professors that looked at empirical data and basically more suburban uh type development, average price points generally three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand dollar residences, many in the million-dollar-plus range. And they found uh that in these higher-density areas, larger solar had a negative impact. But what they also found is in areas with under eight hundred and fifty persons per square mile, there was no negative impact and the density in the subject project, I think, is closer to fifty. It's definitely less uh than a hundred uh people per square mile. So this study, again, for the subject proposed development, shows no negative impact on value. Um, the next study just goes to um some other experience because there's concern about size of major projects. So a project that I worked on, it's called Badger Hollow in uh western um Wisconsin. Thirty-five hundred acres, three hundred megawatts. There was a lot of community concern uh and there was a lot of negativity. And uh I prepared a report, I testified before the Wisconsin Public Utilities Commission. And there was negative uh testimony and there were objectors. And this project uh was approved and I have a copy, but this just kind of summarizes that they found no negative impact to property values. Along with this, I've got three other cases that I was involved with. All two generally average over two hundred acre uh solar farms. The first one, and what's very interesting is these are very recent. The first one on the top is the Paris Solar Farm, which is just west of Kenosha. If anybody's been up and sees the new Amazon facility, it's about two miles immediately west of there. And that was approved in December of two thousand twenty. I did a report, testified again before the Public Utilities Commission. The next page uh was a um Grant County. Uh, and this one was in also western Wisconsin. Uh, this was a little different because it had rolling terrain, which means solar panels could be visible from a distance and there were some objectors. But again, report was done, uh, and I think the setbacks are actually less than this project. The PUC went through and they, they've got a, a judge that reviews and rules. And they were fine, there was no negative impact. And the last one uh was Darian Solar Energy, which just came out in August. Uh, I did a report there, this is just north of Delavan, uh, just northwest of Lake Geneva. So there was a sale of a property in the footprint of over a million dollars uh as this project was going on. And, you know, it had some areas of high value, uh, farmland was not as good quality as the subject. But again, it went through the same PUC project, process and was approved. And the ruling, again, it's a hot, you know, to have a ruling that's uh two months old is very, uh, very fresh. So that concludes my PowerPoint.
Okay, I have a couple of follow-up questions. Jonathan, could you go back to uh slide two? I'm gonna come back to that in a second. Um, just to summarize, th- those were four decisions by the Public Utilities Commission of the State of Wisconsin, correct?
Yes.
And I think you mentioned the Badger Hollow, Hollow Project. That what, that project is, has been operational now for a certain period?
For about six months and I've been tracking sales because it's a large project. Values are somewhat similar to South Dixon as far as improved properties. And there's been no indication based on sales and market activity that there's been a negative impact. If anything, it's been positive, but, you know, part of that is a strong market.
And, and the Wisconsin Commission approved a permit for all four of those solar projects, correct?
Yes, they did.
And in each case that you just discussed, uh, the commission found no negative impact on property values from the, the projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and you mentioned setbacks a couple of times. Are, are you familiar with the uh setback requirements in the new ordinance? I'm calling it the new ordinance because it's the most recent ordinance adopted by Lee County.
I am.
And what are, what are those generally, uh, the number of feet, please?
The, the most significant is the setback from improved residences, which is four hundred feet.
And uh, and uh, Jaren, are you aware that this project will uh apply with those setback rules?
Yes.
And I mean, I, is it a, a good thing having a larger setback for your, from your perspective?
I mean, with anything counsel, there's a balance. Uh, I think two hundred is fair. Uh, four hundred just provides additional separation. But I don't, in my opinion, based on what I've seen, I don't think it necessarily has to be that far, but it provides an additional uh balance and separation.
Okay, thank you. I have one more question and it relates to the uh, the letters on slide two. Uh, there's a reference to MAI and CRE and you mentioned those earlier. But can you explain to us what those certifications mean?
Well, the MAI is a member appraisal institute, so there's like six thousand of us in the world and maybe two hundred in the state of Illinois out of, what, twelve million people? Uh, so it involves a series of coursework, uh, demonstration reports, passing test, a comprehensive exam. It's, I'm not, there's more attorneys in here than there are appraisers, but I'm gonna say it's like a CPA or a law degree. But, you know, the Sears Tower, former Willis Tower in Chicago probably had two thousand lawyers in that building alone. So it's hard to get and the CRE, counselors of real estate worldwide, there's a thousand of us. And it's basically the highest form of counseling, consulting, a lot are appraisers. I'm uh, was on the board, national board for nine years and I was the Midwest uh chair for two.
Thank you, uh, Judge Slaven, that's all the questions I have for this witness. But before I move on, could I ask to enter Mr. Marus's PowerPoint into evidence? I believe it's petitioner's exhibit three?
Three, I marked it three and I'll reserve ruling until we finish cross.
Thank you.
Uh, Mrs. Duffy, do you have any questions, this witness? How about you, Ms. Hinkle? Members of the ZBA, Mr. Forster? Mr. Burrow?
Uh, yes, one or two.
Um, Mr. Rick, can you swallow the mic for us? I know, I know, but it's.
But anyway, um, a couple of questions dealing. Have you uh dealt with any counties that have roughly, well, in our case, four solar farms? Roughly one-third of the total area of the county would be uh solar farms. You dealt with anything that dense?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, where at, which state?
Blaski County, Indiana, which uh has close to a thousand megawatts of solar on a foul, or ten thousand to twelve thousand acres. I don't know the exact amount, but, you know, it's, it's nine, nine hundred megawatts, nine hundred to nine hundred and fifty megawatts.
Roughly what part of the state is that or near what cities in Indiana?
It's um, north, east, maybe fifty, seventy miles, maybe eighty miles of Indianapolis. It's probably fifty miles east of Indianapolis or of Lafayette. It's maybe sixty, seventy miles south of South Bend. Um, you know, it's, there's smaller cities, you know, towns of five hundred to five thousand around it, but that's kind of the, the area of it. And it's, and it's in an area of ag. And it's also an interesting area, it's not too far south of Elkhart, which is known for its major manufacturer of uh trailers and motorhomes.
Thank you. Um, in our situation here locally.
Can I, can I, just, just to clear the record, out on the West Coast, which I don't, I think in Vegas, yeah, I mean, in Nevada and California, there are some, but I'm not including those because it's a whole different situation.
Yeah, I understand. Um, have you dealt with anybody that has done the landscaping uh that we've talked about on this project uh around residences?
Um. As far as the developers, yes, it's kind of the new hot topic. Invenergy has had to do some, they did some in the Badger Hollow. They, they have a proposed one that's in Anderson, Indiana, that they're gonna have to do it. Uh, there's Palaski County, uh, they're going to have to do it. I think that also is becoming the new norm on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Bothy. Mr. Hughes?
No questions.
All right, um, let's see, last time I, last time Zoomers were second. So folks on Zoom, and how many have we got, Jonathan, on Zoom? If you can count real quick. Okay, you folks on Zoom, if you have a question of Mr. Marus, I would like to, if you're video conferencing, click on the tab down at the bottom about in the middle on your screen that should say participants. And you click on that, there should be a list and on that list is another sort of tab link that says raise hand. So if you have a question, please do that. Uh, if you're teleconferencing, stay with us on Zoom, but go to your keypad uh on your smartphone and um type in um star or asterisk and then the number nine. And that will perform the same function, it'll raise your hand so we can see it here on the screen. All right, I'm looking to see if there are any people, help me if you see any, because I'm sort of craning my old neck, but. All right, I don't see any, okay. Folks in the courtroom, um, by raise of hand, I saw Jimmy Lawson's hand first. You're sitting right in the line of sight. No, you.
Jamie Lawson, adjacent landowner. Mr. Marus, are you being paid by Duke Energy Renewables to be here?
This is my job. This is my profession and I charge a professional fee.
So you are getting paid?
That's correct.
Are you aware that? Are you aware that you were investigated by Lee County Sheriff's Department for comments that you made during their last presentation for South Dixon Solar LLC and Duke Energy Renewables?
I have heard nothing. I have had no contact. I don't know what you're talking about.
What percentage of your income is from solar and wind projects?
Over the last five years, I would estimate plus or minus 20%.
Have you ever provided a property value impact analysis for any Lee County wind projects?
I don't believe so. It's possible, but I don't recall doing any.
How many property value impact analysis have you done for solar and wind?
Total. I I would estimate over a dozen, a dozen states, probably 40-ish.
Thank you. Out of all the property value impact analysis you have done for wind and solar, has any ever shown that the project would reduce property values?
No.
How many property in your studies have been sold after a project this size was built around it?
How many projects or properties?
Properties, sorry.
Forty projects, things change daily. I would not have that count and do not follow it.
Other than solar and wind projects, have you ever completed any other property value impact analysis that has shown a reduction in property values?
Yes.
What caused the reductions?
Traffic, noise, smell, height, strain on services, public safety. I would say I don't know if I said noise, that too.
Yeah, thank you. So you had, so you have had property value analysis that show a reduction in proper in property value, just not for wind or solar?
That's correct.
Why is that?
Because all the projects that I have studied have been properly done, properly cited. And done so there are positive impact to the community.
If your property value impact analysis showed that it would reduce the surrounding property values, would you be here right now?
Would I be here right now? If that's my job, I'd give my report, yes, I would.
So so if you're, in your opinion, if your studies show a negative impact on property values, Duke Renewables would continue your fee and have you here for a witness?
That's their decision, not mine.
Thank you. Will the names of the multiple assessors in multiple states that you talked to be in your report? In your 100-page report?
I I believe so. I'm looking right now just to.
And last question, do you live next?
That's where I meant, if you ask him a question, you gotta give him a chance to answer.
I didn't know he had the 100-page report with him. I thought we had his announcement.
Said he's looking right now.
In my report, I just have the list names and phone numbers and projects and capacities for Illinois. But I actually have that information for the other states too, but I didn't put it in there. But I do have it in my addenda for Illinois, yes.
So they're not in your 100-page report, but the multiple people, the assessors you talked to for this project are not in your report?
Well, the state of Illinois, they are in here, yes.
No, the multiple, you had mentioned multiple states. I'm asking if the if the names for all multiple states that you talked to for this project are in your report?
Or states outside of Illinois? No, but they are available.
Thank you. Do you live next to a solar farm?
No.
Thank you. Are you aware that if this project is built, Duke Energy Renewables will pay some elected Lee County Board members and their families millions of dollars and at least one will become a multimillionaire?
Could you repeat that? I I didn't hear the beginning of the question.
Are you aware that if the project is built, Duke Energy Renewables will pay some elected Lee County Board members millions and their families millions of dollars? And at least one will become multimillionaire?
I have to answer it no, because I don't know who's on the board and I don't know the names of the people getting a lease. So that really isn't a question I could answer.
Thank you. Are you aware that Duke Energy Renewables hired the Lee County Board Chairman's daughter, Courtney Kennedy Kennedy, to represent them?
I'm aware that Ms. Kennedy was hired as counsel to represent them. Her family relationships is none of my business.
Are you aware that Lee County Renewables Coordinator, Alice Hinkle's father, Chris Hinkle, is hired and employed by Duke Energy Renewables?
Again, I don't, I'm not aware of the relationships and that's not something that is part of my study.
Are you aware that Duke Energy Renewables is offering surrounding landowners $2,000 a year not to oppose a project through the Good Neighbor Program?
I'm aware that there's a Good Neighbor Program. The exact specifics, I'm not, I do not know the exact numbers.
Thank you. Are you aware that the Lee County Generating Facility used to be owned by Duke Energy?
I guess he first would have to establish that if he's aware of this, of something called a Lee County Generating Facility. Now, he can answer the question. If he can.
I'm aware that Duke Energy has ownership of a lot of energy type products. What they've owned in this county, I do not know.
Are you aware that Tyler Kuhn used to be employed by Duke Energy?
Yes.
Are you aware that Jeff Neves, Duke Energy's Business Development Director, was not willing to sign an agreement that Duke Energy Renewables would not sell or walk away from this project before the 40-year lifespan is up? Like they did with Lee County Generating Station and Tyler Kuhn?
I have no idea.
Do these actions sound like the actions of a good neighbor? Or does it sound more like a Fortune 150 company stacking the deck and trying to take advantage of a county and its residents?
That's argumentative. That, just don't answer that question.
That's all. Thank you.
Mm hmm. Um, other folks in the room by raise of your hand, this is Johansson.
On page nine of your presentation, what was the megawatt of that solar system?
Well, South County?
Yes.
It's approximately 20 megawatts.
Over how many acres?
I could go through my report, but I believe it's in the 150 to 175 acre range.
What does agricultural land sell for in Lee County?
Depends on the quality, but generally in the eight to $12,000 per acre range. And I'm talking about good quality agricultural land. Obviously, if it's got poor shape, got poor drainage, it's got hydrology issues, it's going to be less, something with some additional amenities, it could be higher.
What is the amount of taxes per year per prime acre in northern Illinois on farmland?
It varies. I I don't, I think you need to be more, help me be more definitive.
Could it be in the amount of $250 per acre?
Taxes, no.
Pardon?
No. $250 per acre for taxes, no.
Higher or lower?
Lower.
Will the assessed value increase when this solar system becomes online?
For what properties?
For the South Dixon Solar System, will that assessed value increase?
So there's two levels. There's taxes on the land and then there's a state statute where taxes are assessed based on the megawatt production. And that amount is going to dramatically increase. So the effect of tax is going to be dramatically increased over what it is now.
About how much?
I'm using my phone for a calculator, Your Honor, if that's okay.
For a calculator, that's fine.
Thank you. Probably going to increase over $300 per acre for the properties under solar generating the energy. Not the normal pro, the other agricultural properties will probably go down because it's basically like a balloon and if there's more money in it, it's going to shrink remaining pieces.
This is $300 per acre increase? Is that just where the panels are or the whole 3,838 acres?
I did it over the, whether it's 3,600 or 3,800 acres, that was the number I was using.
Okay.
And that that's just for the increase because of the energy. And then the real estate taxes themselves for the area outside of that will probably diminish.
Thank you.
You, other folks in the room, Mrs. Lawson.
Good evening, John for Lawson, adjacent landowner. So, Mr. Marus, per the statement that you just made and the testimony given by Ryerson yesterday, that taxes will dramatically increase therefore due to, due to that testimony and the seesaw effect that she testified on, non-participating landowners can see a decrease in their property taxes?
That's a question. I'm not clear if it's a question.
Will landowners see a decrease, will non-participated landowners see a decrease in their property taxes?
So the simple answer is yes, but if the governmental bodies change the levy on some of the other areas, let's say on the schools or that where they want to use that money to upgrade the school system, then the money will go towards those areas which for the same comparable improvement would have actually raised the property taxes of those adjoining property owners. So I I can't make a governmental decision because I'm not an elected official. So if they get this extra million three in, they may decide that the schools, the roads, the bridges need it, or they may allocate it as a reduction for the area affected.
You, on page nine for the Los Al County match pair number one, did the sale occur for the 1A before or after the solar was built?
It's up on the screen, right?
Yes.
You can't see the screen.
The solar was either under construction or built or had just been approved.
On page 12, for the same house that you have the three comparisons on?
Yes.
You just stated that it is a strong market. You don't feel the December 23rd, 2020 sale, it being a strong market has a factor in that 19% increase in sale?
I do.
Then on page 17. Is this the same presentation that you utilized from the first go around?
No, it's, there's some similar characteristics, but it's a new presentation.
Where is property number six located?
Southeast of the footprint. And I, if you go several more pages, Jonathan. One more. See on the, this map of the footprint and number six is the bottom right, that's location.
That doesn't match your number six on this. That's number one.
I don't think so. Got to ask one question. You just got it. You can't testify. You're not in the road.
So, number six, does it or does it not match number one?
You are correct. I apologize.
So if there are no negative impacts on property values and this area has a higher land value than others, do you feel that the lease terms for the participating landowners and the good neighbor payment made to non-participating landowners, landowners by Duke Energy is fair?
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. I I, what he thinks is fair or not fair has nothing to do with anything. It's these gentlemen make the decision. Can all have an opinion, but it's not relevant to this. Sorry.
So I have, thank you.
Okay, any other folks in the room?
Okay. Any follow up, Mr. Berry? Yes, sir. Oh, I didn't see you. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry. If it's easier for you to sit, we can ask Dee if she can turn on one of the microphones. Okay.
Do you give us your name and where you live in relation or work or own a business in relation to the boundary of this proposed project?
I'm sorry, I can't understand you.
Fair enough. Would you tell us your name, please, and where you either live, work, or own a business in relation to the boundary of this proposed project?
My name is Margaret Prashan, and I live at in Dixon, 802 South Carolina, so I'm not that close to the project.
How far away would you just estimate?
In a couple of miles, maybe.
Okay, thanks. Go ahead. Your questions of Mr. Marose.
I just wanted to know if in surveying these projects, are any of the projects, have they been in operation for 10 years or more that you know of?
I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you. And the second question is, how many of these projects approximately, percentage-wise, have backup with batteries so that they operate 24 hours a day rather than just during the daylight?
Of the projects that I discussed, I believe two of the larger Wisconsin projects plan on having batteries. But again, that may not happen in the initial phase. That is the trend under consideration for these new projects. But it's, you know, generally part of the approval process. But the original ones, very few, if any, had battery backups.
Do you know of any of the more recent ones that have batteries?
Well, again, I think in the Wisconsin, two of the larger ones are planning to have batteries. You know, I think it's, it's a decision, do they do it on the initial development, or do they wait a year or two?
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you. Any other folks in the room that I missed?
Well, I know.
My fault. Okay, any follow-up, Mr. Berry?
No, I would just renew my request to admit.
Done now. Admitted. So one, two, and three. And you missed up down, Mr. Marose. And perfect timing, it's quarter after, let's take 10. Alrighty, let's pick up again if everybody can find their places. Ms. Kennedy, I see you sitting at council table, so you may proceed.
Thank you, Judge. I'd like to call Tom Huddleston as our next witness.
I'm going to swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
You may inquire.
Thank you. Can you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Yes, Tom Huddleston. Last name is spelled H-U-D-D-L-E-S-T-O-N.
And Mr. Huddleston, can you tell us a little bit about your background?
Yes, I'm a drainage contractor. I'm a third generation. I've actually laid drain tile for over 50 years. I own a group of drainage companies. My partner, Fred McBride, have owned Huddles McBride for over 45 years.
And do you have any experience with solar farms or solar energy systems?
Yes, I do.
And what, if anything, can you tell us about that experience?
Well, we started about three years ago with community solar. And we did 100 plus or minus projects where we actually located the drain tiles, evaluated them, the drain tiles, surveyed them, and then rebuilt the drain tile systems themselves. And then recently, within the last year and a half, we've been involved with utility solar, which are larger projects.
And is this the same experience with wind farms as well?
Yes.
Are you familiar with South Dixon Solar LLC?
Yes, ma'am.
And are you familiar with the proposed project area?
Yes, ma'am.
And what, if anything, can you tell me about the land included in the proposed project?
The project's all encounters what I would consider prime farmland. It's all row crop. It's basically beans and corn, most of it, some pasture land, some wheat, but mostly beans and corn.
And the South Dixon Solar Project is required to do a drain tile survey. Can you describe how a drain tile survey is conducted?
Yes, there's several different types of surveys. Normally on large sites, we do what's called a perimeter survey, survey where we trench around the edges of the property, and we locate the drain tiles that are beneficial to the lands of others, the upland, non-participating tributary landowners. And then we trace those drain tiles through the project to where they either egress the project itself or they discharge into a ditch. And then we further make recommendations on, on how to modify those drain tiles.
And so how can a solar energy system be constructed to protect the integrity of the existing drain tile system?
Well, in some cases, you can avoid the drain tiles. Once we locate them, we, when we do locate them, we survey them on very tight intervals. And then we lay those over the civil plans that shows exactly where all the piles and the, and the cables are to be installed. If we can't, if we can't protect the drain tiles, then we install new drain tiles in several different methods. One is take the old tile out, put a new tile in. The other is just to plow in new tile lines.
And so in the instance where you remove the drain tile and you put new in, would you replace it with similar quality or would it be better quality?
We always restore, we restore them with better materials. We actually use a polyethylene pipe called dual wall that's smooth wall on the inside, corrugated on the outside. It's rigid pipe, comes in 14 or 20-foot sections. It is still perforated, but it's, it's a much higher grade pipe than the existing pipe that we removed.
And when you testified earlier that you, you locate the drain tiles, how do you do that?
We have several methods. We always need to encounter the drain tile with slit trenching. And once we find the drain tile, we excavate it. We run locators down the drain tiles, or we hand probe the drain tiles. We then stake them, and then we excavate them in, in certain intervals to gather information and data on them. Then we survey them with a, a survey system on state plane coordinates.
And are you familiar with what's known as the Agricultural Impact Mitigation Agreement for solar projects?
Yes, ma'am.
And is this also commonly referred to as the AMA?
Yes, it is.
And, and does the AMA include any requirements for the repair of drain tiles if they're damaged during the construction of a solar farm project?
Yes, ma'am, it does. The AMA agreement basically states that all drain tiles should be protected, reinstalled, or modified. The basis of the AMA agreement is, is to maintain the prime farmland resource of the agricultural land itself, which includes modifying and maintaining the agricultural drainage system.
And so are there certain techniques that are covered in the AMA for the actual repair of that drain tile?
Yes, and the industry has standards within its own.
Okay, can you describe some of those techniques for me?
Sure. In some cases, we actually remove the drain tiles with excavators and install the new drain tile in the, in the same pilot or the same trench. In other methods, we'll plow new drain tiles in, or we'll open cut them with trenchers. In other cases, we'll section repair those drain tiles with adapters and new pipes to bring the drain tiles out of conflict from the solar apparatus.
And can you tell us a little bit, generally speaking, about your role in the construction of a solar project?
Well, we're actually drain tile contractors, so we actually put the drain tile in. We do the investigations because we do a lot of design work to put new systems in. And we have an awareness of where tiles are, and we understand how to locate them. And so we locate them, we map them, we give that information to the, the civil engineer, the design engineer. And then we make recommendations to the engineer on how to modify the drain tiles. And then we'll actually reinstall the drain tiles in some cases with some other local contractors.
And so during this process, do you perform any outreach to adjacent non-participating landowners?
We do. Part of our program is that it's very important with a solar farm or a wind farm, it's very important to protect others' rights to drain. We call those drains legal mutual drains. Those are large drain tiles that run through the participating project and reach up into the lands of others and actually benefit the non-participating landowners. So it's very important that we rebuild those drain tiles and reestablish them. So once we locate the drain tile and we map it out, we then meet with the upland landowners and invite them to be stakeholders in the design process so that they're assured that they'll maintain the benefit of free flow drainage that they had prior to the project.
And do you do any outreach to the participating landowners within the project?
Yes. And then after we take care of the adjoining or the non-participating landowners, we usually meet with the developer and the individual landowners on the project to assess exactly what their needs are and issues they've had or what improvements they would like to put in.
And is it a fair statement that one of the primary goals or drainage goals for the solar energy project is really to have an obligation to the landowners to maintain the stability of the drainage tile?
It is the AMA agreement and the landowner's requirement. In most of the solar contracts that I have seen, requires the developer to leave the land once it's, the project's over, leave it in equal or better condition than when they first took on the land.
And so is it safe to say that drainage overall will be improved after the solar farm has been built and the drainage has been rerouted or reconfigured?
Yes. Many of these drain tiles are well over 100 years old. So by putting new drain tiles in now would keep us from having to replace them at a later date.
And how will the operator of the solar farm know when a drain tile has been damaged?
Well, it's rather obvious. Water boils to the surface and causes some saturation flume within a particular area. And in some cases, it'll actually erupt to the surface and start overland rivulets. So it's obvious from the aggravated hydrology within a certain area.
And do you have an opinion on what the long-term impact on agricultural land and soils with having a solar farm sited in an area that's been primarily used for agriculture?
We actually think that allowing the agricultural land to rest for 30-plus years, allowing grasses to be planted where there will be no erosion, to allow deep rooted grasses that actually regenerate the organics within the soil structure and to rebuild old and antiquated drain tile systems is actually a benefit. And when it comes out, the land will be ready to be farmed.
And with your experience in the drainage system and in the ag industry, do you have any concerns about taking acres out of row crop production for a solar farm?
No, I do not.
I have nothing further.
How about you, Mr. Boonstra? How about you, Ms. Duffy? Ms. Henkel? Board members, Mr. Forster? How about you, Mr. Burrow? Mr. Bothy? Mr. Hughes?
No questions.
Okay. To folks in the hearing room here in the courtroom, Mr. Lawson?
Jamie Lawson. If you had to put electric, if you had to bore underneath a creek or a road bed and put a conduit in there to run something through that conduit for anything that you do, and then the wire is removed but the conduit is not, is that leaving the property like you found it or better?
I can't answer that. I'm a drainage contractor. I'm not sure about the electrical components.
Have you ever performed work on a solar farm with this? Have you ever performed work on a solar farm covering this many acres of prime farmland?
No, I have not. I've done several, I've done many solar farms. I haven't done one yet of this size.
On this size with this much prime farm ground? You've never have. Thank you.
Other folks in the room, by raise of your hand. Mr. Johansson, I saw you first.
Martha Johansson. How deep are the drain tiles located?
Excuse me?
How deep, how far down are the drain tiles located generally?
Most drain tiles are a minimum of 24 inches and they can go all the way to seven or eight feet depending on the grade of the land. I would say on average is probably 36 to 40 inches.
How deep will the solar system wires be buried?
I don't have the answer to that.
Since we haven't had any decommissioning yet, I was wondering. Okay, since we haven't had any decommissioning of solar systems yet, how can we be absolutely sure that the land will be as good as or even better than it was before the solar system was built?
Well, that's my opinion based on the fact that land always is more productive when we put new drain tile systems in place. The land also produces better when grasses are planted or organics are back in the soils as proven back when we had several years of set aside programming. So, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Anybody else? Mr. Lawson?
Jennifer Lawson. So it was actually previously testified on October 12th, 2021 that there is a potential for them to leave the hulls of the conduit when they do decommission this. So will leaving those hulls during the decommissioning adversely affect drain tiles?
No.
Do you feel that is returning it to the previous state? Leaving those?
Obviously, it's not returning it to its previous condition, but I can't identify a reason why it would be detrimental to raising agricultural crops.
You mentioned inviting stakeholders and adjoining landowners to review designs.
Yes ma'am.
What's your typical timeframe for that? Is that after the approval of, if this proceeds?
The drain tile investigation would take place probably after the approval. And so when we locate the drain tiles, I would meet with the individual landowners who benefit from the drain tiles I need to replace. And the reason I do that is we just want to generally be sure that we have the proper drainage in place that that individual had benefited from.
So if there are drain tiles that need to be replaced on non-participating landowners, is that paid by Duke Energy or is that a recommendation made by your company then?
Well, it's a recommendation, but it's an agreement between Duke Energy and the landowner.
Non-participating landowners.
Correct. The non-participating landowners would not pay for, it's Illinois Drainage Code. It's actually the law that we continue to allow that individual to benefit. So we have to be absolutely sure that that drain is out of conflict and it won't fail.
Are you being paid by Duke Energy?
Yes ma'am.
That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Yes, sir?
Good evening. Jonathan Mix, M-I-X. I work in the area. I actually work all over Illinois. I'm a Millwright Local 2158 representative. My question is, how many years have you been installing and servicing and repairing drain tiles?
Well, I'm third generation, so my family's done it. So I mean, I've installed drain tiles since I was, for over 50 years in my teens, but I've owned these companies for 40, over 45 years.
Okay. And then approximately, if you could put a number on it, how many acres of tile lead have you done in your course of?
I do, I do a lot of large, and I actually work in Huddles McBride, the other companies we own and oversee. And Huddles McBride, we do many, many commercial and residential projects of many thousands of acres, the investigations, and then the drain tile abandonment. And then we, of course, we install drain tile as well. So I think I do well over, well over 100,000 acres a year.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Any other folks in the room? It's like Hamilton doesn't remember where it happened. All right. Turning to Zoomers. Oh, I'm sorry, Charlie, go ahead. Careful. You can go ahead and ask him from right there. I can hear you.
Got to hear him right.
No, you're right. You're right.
Are you going, you're talking about drain tiles. Before you put the solar farm in, are you taking out all the old ones and replacing them with new ones? Or is, or are you here so they don't hit? I mean, you check, you mark the drain tiles so they don't hit it when they drill the post for the panels? Or are you replacing all the tiles in this?
Charlie, that's a long question. It's hard for anybody to answer. Let's start with this. I'll ask it for you. When you, when you, when the, if the solar farm is approved, Mr. Huddleston, and you start to work on the tiles, do you replace them all or just broken ones?
We protect the drain tiles that we can. We protect the drain tiles that we can. And then we install new drain tiles in place of older drain tiles which have either failed or will be hit by the solar. So the end result is that we put enough, we maintain enough drainage and install enough drainage so the farm can continue to drain as it did in pre-solar conditions.
Yes, sir?
Thank you.
That all? Okay. Turning to Zoomers. Remind you, if you want, you want to ask Mr. Huddleston a question on the bottom, hit participant. And then on the list, click on raise hand. If you're on your cell phone, stay with us, but asterisk number and then the number nine. We'll wait a few seconds here for folks to, everybody help me if you can. Looking for raised hands? Looking, looking. All right, seeing none, you may, unless you have any follow-up, Ms. Kennedy?
I do not.
You may step down. Thank you. Any further evidence for this evening, Ms. Kennedy?
Not for this evening, Judge.
Okay, very good. We will recess until, let me check something. Just bear with me a minute, please. All right, the evening of October 27th, that's a Wednesday. Is that some, if not okay with any of this? We okayed that previously, but if it's changed, please let me know any of the necessaries. Six o'clock here at the Ole County Courthouse, six o'clock, October 27th, Wednesday. Okay, everybody have a good week plus. Yes. Oh my God. I'm sorry. Thank you. I thought I was ahead of myself. I keep getting that D mixed up. Never mind. Thank you, D. The 19th, which is one, two, three, four, five days from now. I apologize. October 19th, six o'clock here at the old Lee County Courthouse. I apologize. Somehow I looked at my calendar and thought today was the 19th, but it's not. I've confused you now, haven't I, Mr. Bothy? Okay, 19th, six o'clock. That's a Tuesday. One, one, correct. Huh? You gotta come be. Glenn won't be here, so you gotta come. You gotta call Rex too.
If it's possible, try and get on Zoom.
We don't know. I can't guarantee it.
They wanted to violate his, no concerns, doesn't have any complaints, but violate his eyes to make sure. No, I think we're good. I don't think we're gonna do that. And he goes, are you sure? Like, yeah. Why am I gonna put him through having blurry eyes and everything?
But if people get the impression you've endured it, then they're entitled to know it.